Good afternoon and welcome to the Committee on Veterans. At this time, we ask if you could please place phones on vibrate or silent mode. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair, ready to begin?
Thank you, Sergeant. Good afternoon. Welcome to today's Veterans Committee Oversight Hearing on the State of Veterans of Foreign Wars, American Legion Posts, and Other Veteran Service Organizations with Physical Location. I am Councilmember Robert Holden, Chair of the New York City Council's Committee on Veterans. VFW and American Legion Posts provide crucial advocacy and support services for veterans. Since its inception, VFW has been instrumental in establishing the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs, the VA, the development of a national cemetery system, the passing of the Post 9/11 GI Bill, improving VA medical care for female veterans, and advocating for providing compensation for veterans exposed to Agent Orange or diagnosed with Gulf War Syndrome. American Legion Posts provide mentorships and assist veterans with accessing education, healthcare, stable housing, meaningful careers, and they build, you know, strong social networks, as we know. Local halls operated by VFW and American Legion Posts serve as a safe, critical community space for veterans coping with post-traumatic stress disorder and issues attendant to the transition of military to civilian life, as well as provide a place to commiserate and support each other. And that's the critical part of these Legion Halls and American Legion Halls and VFWs. They provide a critical resource for the community, providing a space for community members to celebrate a number of things, like weddings and birthdays and so forth and other milestones. These are invaluable locations. During the pandemic, many posts nationwide provided crucial resources to their communities, exemplified by American Legion Post 483 in Queens, which operated a food pantry feeding thousands of families. Over the years, many of us have visited a VFW or American Legion Hall for, like I mentioned before, parties, community fundraisers, and local events. So it's a community center also, not just a meeting place for veterans. They were and are the cornerstone of many communities. These locations were especially important to Vietnam vets, who did not get a warm welcome returning from that war. And that's why we owe it to them. We owe it certainly to the Vietnam vets, who, again, didn't receive, and I lived that period, obviously, went through it, and they didn't get a warm welcome. So these veterans found a place to make friends, discuss their time in service, and ultimately found a place of belonging. So however, VFWs and American Legion Posts struggle to remain open, as they struggle to attract and retain the membership of younger Post 9/11 veterans and deal with the economic pressures imposed by the pandemic. Over 12,000 American Legion Halls closed for at least part of the pandemic. The average age of a VFW member is 67, with 400,000 members over 80. The halls that have managed to stay open continue to provide vital social services to our nation's veterans and serve the community in which they are located. Today, we will look forward to hearing how the administration currently supports veteran service organizations and to identify ways the city can better support our American Legion and VFW halls and posts. We also look forward to hearing from veterans themselves on the importance of these organizations. So I want to thank the administration, the advocates, and the veterans who have joined us today. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues who are here, Councilmember Kagan and Councilmember Palladino. And finally, I would like to thank committee staff who worked to prepare for this hearing, Committee Counsel David Romero and Legislative Policy Analyst Anastasia Zimina, as well as my Chief of Staff Daniel Cosina and Legislative Director Craig Kawana. I will now turn it over to the Committee Counsel to swear in the members of the administration. Do you want to, okay?
We will now call on the following members of the administration to testify. James Hendon.
Press the button there.
James Hendon, Commissioner of the New York City Department of Veteran Services; Paul Vallone, Deputy Commissioner of External Affairs; Ellen Greeley, Assistant Commissioner for Policy and Strategic Partnerships; Tanya Thomas, Veterans Care Coordinator. I will deliver the oath to you, and after reading the oath, I will call upon you to respond to it. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions? Commissioner James Hendon.
I do.
Deputy Commissioner Paul Vallone.
I do.
Assistant Commissioner Ellen Greeley.
I do.
Tanya Thomas.
I do.
Thank you. Commissioner Hendon, you may begin your testimony when ready.
Before, we've been joined by Councilmember Nurse, who's a member of the committee. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, Chair Holden, members of the committee, advocates, and New York City veterans. My name is James Hendon, and I'm honored to serve as Commissioner of the New York City Department of Veteran Services, or DVS. I'm joined by my colleagues, Paul Vallone, Deputy Commissioner of External Affairs, virtually; Ellen Greeley, Assistant Commissioner for Policy and Strategic Partnerships; and Tanya Thomas, our Veterans Care Coordinator and American Legion Post 483, Rosedale-Lorlton Auxiliary President. Thank you for providing us with this opportunity to discuss the very important topic regarding this city's veteran service organizations, or VSOs, which provide our community's veterans with essential services such as VA benefits advisors, scholarship services, student fellowships, military assistance programs, financial assistance for basic needs, various volunteer programs, and, most important to our current goals, housing assistance. DVS fulfills our core mission by providing New York City's 200,000 veterans with essential services and programs focused on pivotal areas such as economic empowerment, housing security, benefits advisement, health and wellness services, and culture. Through DVS's outreach, we have identified and received contact information from more than 100,000 veterans, enabling our agency to provide updates for various events, services, and other opportunities within their respective communities. It is important to keep in mind throughout this hearing that while these organizations are run independently from DVS, part of our mission in supporting VSOs is to connect the organizations with agencies which they may need assistance from. However, for the most part, these organizations are not-for-profit organizations that do not have paid staff, and therefore do not have the adequate access or experience in accessing governmental agencies when they encounter issues which may require governmental assistance. We remain an available asset to them for assistance, and throughout our meeting today, you will hear testimony on how DVS does assist these organizations on a frequent basis. As a brief overview for your situational awareness, American Legions and Veterans of Foreign Wars Posts are two of the larger veteran service organizations in the nation. Initially established decades ago, these organizations were instrumental in advocating for the creation of the Veterans Administration, creating GI Bill benefits for returning World War II veterans, and establishing the National Cemetery Administration. Today, these efforts continue, and these organizations, along with various other veteran organizations, remain fighting for improved services and rights for veterans. Though services provided by these organizations are critical to the veteran community, many organizations remain underfunded. Later in this testimony, you will hear about our agency's efforts to assist our local organizations, though many holes are left to fill. As the daily needs and challenges that each of the VSOs here in New York City change, so too does the level of support that our staff at DVS provides. Later, you will hear testimony from Tanya Thomas, who has served in her local Legion Post as she continues to provide support for DVS and is able to share her experiences on a personal level. This volunteer work helps to give a boots-on-the-ground approach that the individuals within DVS are proud to provide. As the various challenges facing local chapters of each VSO change, particularly in the ever-changing post-pandemic world, these relationships become more necessary and apparent. For the benefit of the organizations and persons who are present today, perhaps for the first time, I would like to give you a summary of these initiatives. The NYC Department of Veteran Services has several initiatives to support the city's VSOs, including, but not limited to, our Final Honors Program. The Final Honors Program ensures that every eligible, unclaimed, and indigent veteran decedent is given a dignified burial with military honors at a national cemetery. We're in partnership with the Chief Medical Examiner's Office, the New York State American Legion, and several local funeral homes. DVS facilitated more than 200 burials during fiscal year 2022. More information on that is at nyc.gov/vetburials. Next one is Mission Vet Check. Mission Vet Check is a wellness initiative that allows volunteers to make supportive check-in calls to New York City veterans. Volunteers provide their peers with vital information on essential public services, COVID-19 resources and testing locations, and online mental health support. Mission Vet Check has been executed through various partnerships with veteran service organizations like the United War Veterans Council, New York Hope for the Warriors, Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 528, American Legion Post 422, American Legion Post 398, the Catholic War Veterans, the 715 Veterans Association, Inc., Vietnam Veterans of America Post 126, and the National Association of Black Military Women, the Brooklyn Chapter. More details are available at nyc.gov/vetcheck. For veteran benefit services, starting in 2022, accredited DVS staff members began helping NYC veterans and their families process Veterans Affairs claims, or VA claims. Since the inception of the program, DVS's assisted veterans submit over 300 claims to the VA for a range of disability and pension needs. More can be found there at nyc.gov/vetclaims. For Vet Connect Pro, in 2021, DVS launched Vet Connect Pro, an employment tool designed to help veterans find employment, professional mentorship, and a wide range of resources available in the My City dashboard. Within this dashboard, the system uses every user's profile information to make available their nearest American Legion and VFW post, connecting over 80 posts across the five boroughs with approximately 700 veterans using the system. More can be found at nyc.gov/vetconnectpro. Veteran Voices Project, or VVP, is DVS's oral history project designed to preserve the story of NYC's veteran community, for which a dozen of our stories come directly from service members who currently serve in a VSO or have served in a VSO prior to passing away. More can be found at nyc.gov/vetvoices. And when it comes to food insecurity, for the DVS Food Insecurity Initiative through a partnership with HelloFresh and the New York State Division of Veteran Services, Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 1548 Springfield Gardens, and the American Legion Post 483 Laurelton. DVS has distributed more than 28,000 meal kits to veterans in southeast Queens. And separate from that, more than 1 million food kits have been distributed throughout the city. Details available at nyc.gov/vetfood. And then, when it comes to ending chronic veteran homelessness, our Housing and Support Services team has housed over 1,000 homeless veterans and stood up an aftercare unit to help ensure that veterans whom DVS houses remain housed, avoiding a return to housing insecurity. Details at nyc.gov/vethousing. Lastly, DVS has provided $25,000 in financial assistance available through our grant process to help VSOs in need. Specifically, DVS provided grants to VSOs struggling during the COVID-19 pandemic through the generosity of the Bob Woodruff Foundation, History Channel, Penn Fed Foundation, Stephen Siller's Tunnels to Towers Foundation, and Richmond County Savings Foundation. Whereas a total of 22 veteran service organizations were awarded $1,136 apiece to help offset economic hardships, organizations who received the grant are as follows. American Legion, Sam Young Post 620, William Irving Post 774, Memorial Post 1833, George P. Davis Post 116, McFadden Brothers Post 1380, Little Neck Douglasson Post 103, Broad Channel Post 1404, John F. Prince Post 6478, Continental Post 1424, Corporal John Russof Post 1632, Rosedale Post 483, and Benjamin Moore Post 1946, Gold Star Post 1365, Cespino Russo Post 1544, Henry and Stanley Chikhan Post 1578, that was American Legion. From the VFW, Edward F. Lusk-Lukowski Post 7096, Prince Wynn Post 260, Edward O. Gordon Post 5298, Queensborough Hill Post 3427, also the Michael Alice Post 9587. From the Catholic War Veterans, Saint Sebastian's Post 870. In conclusion, I'd like to take this opportunity to share a clear message with our community of veteran service organizations. The New York City Department of Veteran Services remains focused on serving you despite what era or demographic you represent. We hear and recognize the challenges VSOs face today, and will do our utmost to make certain that you receive any support needed to maintain and expand the footprint each of you have built in every neighborhood and borough in New York City. That is our steadfast commitment. It is an honor and privilege to serve all of you, and I thank you for allowing us to testify before you today. We are pleased to address any questions you may have.
Thank you, Commissioner. And aside from those grants, so essentially $1,100 was given to these posts that you mentioned, 22. How many posts do we have in New York City? Does anybody have a number? Do you have that?
About 170.
Get closer to the mic.
During COVID, I was able to put together, compile a list, and came up with about 170 different organizations for veteran services.
How many again?
170 veteran services.
One, seven, oh.
Yep, but not all of them have real estate.
Okay.
And we want to clarify, we define a VSO if a group of veterans are gathering, that to us is a VSO. And so you've got, you know, our legacy VSOs, the American Legions, Veterans of Foreign Wars, things along those lines, of which we've estimated somewhere between 55 and 60 physically have property. But then you have other entities that we look at as VSOs. So if it's an employee resource group, if it's a student veterans group, if it's masked, we, everyone is equal in our eyes as far as a group of veterans is a VSO.
But you understand, in your testimony, you understand how important these are. And in my opening statement, they're really kind of a community center, but they also act as, you know, really, they support our veterans in so many ways, including mental health, because what better way do you have if you came back from, and again, many, when I speak to many of the veterans, even from the Vietnam War and before, they still have those scars, they still have definite issues that they're dealing with. And they tell me that the best way they get relief is by going to these posts. So that's why it's incumbent upon us to really keep them open and support them. And other than what you mentioned with those grants from, how much is in that?
Twenty.
It was $25,000, right?
Yeah, we raised $25,000, we raised $25,000 from the various foundations. But in addition, for those that didn't have real estate, we also distributed Home Depot cards, gift cards of 100 of them, $100 to various Home Depot organizations.
Right, but we, you know, in looking and visiting my posts in my district, and I guess the councilmembers here can talk about their districts, what they're facing, every time a storm comes, they get impacted, it seems. Then we find out that their insurance didn't cover it. And, I mean, even getting, one of my Kowalinski posts in my district had five feet of water in the basement, and I tried to get the fire department in there to pump it out in the last hurricane that we got hit with. And it's just that, you know, and again, if their insurance doesn't cover it, they have a tough time recovering. So what else do you see the role of DVS to try to help them maneuver around? Are there federal grants, like you mentioned, you know, that they could tap into for capital? Because many of these posts that we see are in need of it, they're, especially capital. And that's why I'm trying to try to maneuver. But where do you see, what do you see the role of DVS if, in a perfect world, if you had the funding, if we had access to all the grants? And by the way, the, many of the veterans, I mean, I have trouble maneuvering when I was, when I was trying to do a not-for-profit, trying to maneuver the city's funding process, and I had to get help from, and obviously, the veterans, many of them, if not most of them, have problems with trying to get through the paperwork. Even the best of not-for-profits have trouble. So I know your office helps a bit with that, but in a perfect world, with proper funding, where do you see DVS going or trying to keep these halls open?
Yeah, so I would, I would say that we do try to direct them to funding sources in certain cases, particularly with the Economic Disaster Loan Program that the feds were offering during COVID. We offered, we created a relationship with the Penn Fed Foundation, and they were on hand to help facilitate the loan application itself. In all honesty, not too many took advantage of it, because by the time we got our message out, the money was gone. So, I mean, there's some realities to it. In the case of New York State, you know, they have their capital funding program. We alerted, again, the VSOs to that opportunity. A lot of this, in all honesty, has to do with capacity building for the organizations. And I think collectively, the city council, our agency, as well as a number of not-for-profit organizations are in the building to strengthen and increase the survivability of these particular organizations. But there's also another piece of it, and that's the willingness for some of these organizations to be willing to make changes to them also. And I think that that's, each of these organizations have a certain culture to it. You have to be respectful of what that culture might be, and also recognize that, again, you know, you're talking about an all-volunteer organization. They're a peculiar kind of classification, they're really mostly 501(c)(19), which means that they're not really a small business, and they're, in some cases, don't qualify as a real not-for-profit, too.
And you know, that's another thing that we're hearing. They're not a business, but yet they get charged, many of them are getting charged business rates for utilities. Do you have any information on that? Because that's, that's some of the, like, for instance, we got a complaint from a hall, a VFW hall that wasn't in my district, but they said, why are they getting, why do they have to pay business rates? If anybody knows, if you've ever tried to, you know, operate out of a business location, everything is much higher, utilities, you know, the gas, everything. And it's really a crime that these halls are paying for commercial rates. Is there anything that we can do with that area? I mean, I've been...
Mr. Chair, I'll jump in for you on that, and Commissioner. First of all, always good to see you, Councilmember Holden, and chair of my fellow council members, and to the new councilmembers who have joined this prestigious committee, welcome. We are always eager to see the councilmembers at the hearings and bring back the testimony and stories from your districts. You know, DVS really isn't the regulatory body for these organizations, but what we do is try to assist. So if you see any of these fines or regulations that come up, what we try to do, and what Ellen and the team does, is kind of navigate between the Building Department and any other agency that might step in to do that. I saw the bill that you put in, and I think that's a great idea, to extend the time. Those are the steps that these organizations need, need more time. And it really is a shame when they're not given the proper notice to step up and make the changes that might be necessary, because most of that wasn't done intentionally, it was just done on an emergency basis. To the prior question you brought up, you know, it's interesting, you know, Bob and I, we worked together to kind of bring the council to the table, to that also. So now that, sitting on, with two hats, on the administration side and the council side, what we tried to do this year, and I thank Chair Holden and his team for joining in, as well as Councilmember Palladino and some of the other councilmembers, to make the council members' offices resource centers, and also put on our website and your website how the VSOs can apply for these critical grants. And most of them are on the councilmember's own district and funding abilities. So those $5,000, $10,000 grants are tremendous. The problem that we ran into was awareness of the program and how to apply. So this year, DVS really made it a concerted effort to put that process, put that link available, and work with the councilmembers. We even had Board President Donovan Richards agree to match with the councilmembers of the Queens delegation any capital grants that could be offered to the VSOs. That's something we want to continue in future use and something we want to grow upon, because if we can really start to tackle the foundational issues at these organizations, which sometimes is the bankruptcy problem, can't fix the roof, can't do the heating, can't do the floors, can't make accessibility ramps, it gets overwhelming. And we share in that overwhelminess, and it's very difficult for the smallest agency in the city to try to navigate through that. But making the organizations aware of those funds has been a proud step in the right direction this year, and we want to grow on that.
Thank you, Paul Vallone. And again, we worked together when you were in the council, and some of the ideas, again, that we said is, the utilities, or even the Building Department, like you had mentioned, should not give them a fine automatically, these halls, they should warn them. They should tell them, look, if this is a serious issue, we'll give you some time, rather than just fine them, warn them. And so we have to get the city to work together with these halls, but we also, we need the utilities, like I mentioned before, that we need to bring them into line and get everybody on the same team. So let's work together, and I'll certainly work with your office commissioner, to try to talk to the utilities, try to straighten out each post. There's 170, like you've mentioned, it's, that's not, you know, a difficult task. Yes, it is maybe contacting and trying to, you know, iron out these things, but I think in one fell swoop, if we work together, we can fix some of the problems that are facing these halls.
May I add that? We're on the precipice of something...
Pull the mic closer, because I have a difficult hearing, yeah.
So we're on the precipice of something really exciting and novel. With Dwyer Funding, we issued a request for, of interest. We've gotten back about 21 different proposals, two from which, from the VSOs themselves. But what we're really looking to do is for our local socialization providers, and that means arts and culture organizations, dance studios, yoga therapy, massage therapy organizations to go ahead and to really collaborate with the local VSOs. And we are going to try to, you know, what I call, help with the sausage-making in order to get the organizations to chat with each other and embrace each other, so that we can really create thriving VSOs in our community. It's an experiment, we'll see whether the doors open, but certainly, we're really excited about getting the money out the door and getting our VSOs engaged in the community.
Yeah, that leads me to the next group of questions, like, how do we get the younger veterans involved? Because as I know, I know you're going to say something, Commissioner, but, all right, but, you know, as we saw from history, I remember when my dad was a part of, when he came back from World War II, and there were no, even in the 70s and 80s, there were no or very few Vietnam vets. And many, many times, there was like, some of the members kind of like shunned even the Vietnam vets, because they're much older than World War II vets, so they didn't accept them, or the Korean War vets. So there's that, there's that recruitment that we have to do to try to get the veterans, and I think some of the veterans will probably say this, but we need, to keep these halls open, we need recruiting some of the recent veterans. And do you have, has there been any outreach, any outreach on that? And then I'll turn it over to some of my colleagues to ask questions, and I'll wait for my second group of questions.
Thank you so much about that, Mr. Chair. You know, when I think about this topic, to me, you know, you mentioned in your remarks that it's average age of a VFW member 67, and we just said last week, the average age, the median age of a Vietnam veteran is 76. And so the age hasn't been going down. In other words, it implies you don't have a lot of young people coming into the mix. I feel as though we do many things at DVS, one of the top things is try to bring more young blood into these systems. And to that point, for the better part of more than two years, we were in a back-and-forth with the Defense Department to obtain information about the veterans who are coming home. 200,000 people leave the military each year, as far as leaving active service. 100,000 of them settle down in the place they're not from. And so we've got a highly mobile population, about 3,000 to 5,000 come to New York City. So out of all 200,000 that get out, roughly 3,000 to 5,000 come to New York City. We know, because as of last fall, the DOD started to send us the electronic separation information for all vets. This is better information than the VA, because you're coming straight from the source. And so for us, it's, what can we do to message to these young service members, people who've just left the service, to tie them in with the older, you know, service members, as can be found in these veteran service organizations? And so whenever we talk about all these problems, I think to myself, it's about the bodies, it's about having that young blood within that post, so we can be able to see this baton handover in the right way. We are working avidly with outreach to the transitioning service members. What's tricky here, and Ellen, you know, intimated, she suggested it, it's, you've got cultural differences here, you've got different ways people operate also, you've got different modalities. So you may have someone for whom, you know, all the connection I need is through this. I don't necessarily feel like I need to go to the post. How do we tie that person in with that American Legion, with that VFW? You know, so you've got these different factors here, where I think that critical to us saving our legacy VSOs, especially the post, is getting that young blood in, and we've been doing what we can on the outreach front. You know, I can leave it to Ellen to speak more about our mentorship activities there, but to me... But to me, center of gravity, you know, one piece of this is information. The issue you brought up about the utilities and the wrong rates being charged to our veteran organizations, it's making sure they have information. Last hearing, I was quick to point out that the council funding deadline had not expired yet. We had a website for it. It was nyc.gov/vetcouncilfunding. I love having sites, you know, and we wanted to make sure folks know about that. They know about the state's capital grants program. We're working to distribute the state Dwyer funding in a certain way. When the VA put out a grant for the Parker Gordon Fox Grant, to end veteran suicide, to help end it, we got the word out to our service organizations about that. So we let them know, city, state, federal opportunities, and if there are philanthropic foundation opportunities, let folks know. It's just, as an example, we mentioned, you know, we raised about $250,000. We split the check amongst all who applied, and that's how you got the 1136 that went to those VSOs during COVID. It was a two-page application. We only got 22 respondents after roughly 50 whom we'd reached out to. And so it speaks to, we need to make sure that we've got enough folks there to be able to do that type of work. And if that's the lift with the two-page application, where I was there watching Ellen and her team tell folks, look, please, fill this out. We got you, just fill it out. If that's what we're dealing with, that, what are we looking at on the council discretionary funding side? What are we looking at on the federal side, on other things? And so we feel like getting that that fountain of youth within the organizations can be, that's attacking the deeper issue here, in my opinion, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, it sounds like the council offices could help out, too, because we could then, if they're not responding to you, then we could, you know, you can go to us and say, look, this is what we have to do, or this, we haven't gotten an answer from this local post, can you reach out?
Exactly. That's, that would be tremendous help, to that partnership. And I think we've seen that together, and the offices we're working, and what a difference it's made to the VSOs in the council members' district. Now using DVS with the council member together at your office is such a relief, not having to come downtown or to the Borough Hall. Anytime we can bring services and staff, and you'll hear Tanya in a little bit, speak to that, it's a tremendous relief, and it gets the whole process moving a lot quicker.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues. Councilmember Palladino had some questions.
Good afternoon, and thank you. I want to say to the Commissioner, and the Deputy Commissioner, and to Tanya, I can't thank you enough. As being a Veterans Resource Center, the second Wednesday, two Wednesdays a month, we just finished last Wednesday. Tanya will be back again next Wednesday. My office has become a turnstile. It has, it doesn't stop. She's busy from the minute she gets there, and she stays so often, much later than she needs to be. People come from Staten Island, they come from Westchester, they come from all over the five boroughs. So this Resource Center that we set up in our council offices, mine has been going since December. It has been a tremendous asset to know, that these vets know, that all they have to do is take a ride, they start to book appointments with my office, or they just come knowing already the dates are set. They know every Wednesday that Tanya's going to be there. We have, in District 19, I understand, one of the largest concentrated war veterans than anyplace else in the city. With that being said, we have seen our VFWs close. One, Paul, that interests me, and you know which one it is, it's the Catholic War Veterans off of 168th Street, on 168th Street, off of Northern Boulevard. It's it's in bad, bad shape. And that's needed, these guys are practically bankrupt. They need a new roof very badly. I wanted to fund the roof. I wanted to talk more to Donovan Richards about that, because I, these guys, I'm telling you, they need, that building needs help terribly. And they don't want to dissolve it, even though they've shrunk in number. We have another VFW that was located on 149th Street and 19th Avenue. And that was very sad to see that. It's an old Victorian house. It's been a VFW since the 60s, and that closed, it has now been torn down, and a house is being built. They were then, those vets were sent to the American Legion Hall, Post 131, which is on Clintonville Street, which you've also visited. And what we're doing is, because the population isn't there, you know, to fill a building or to keep a building up, whether they have parties or fundraisers. So my question is, I guess, to you guys, am I going about this the right way to get my funding, to help the Catholic War Veterans, in particular, this one building? And what more can we do to make sure you get funding? One second, I just want another thing. Did we yet, as a city council, do a budget for the veterans? We're working on it. So we haven't yet had had a budget hearing when it comes to the Veterans Administration. And you all know how I feel about that. So I'm going to leave it there, because I think it's sad that it hasn't happened for you guys yet. So take it away, guys. Up to you.
I'll start. Thank you so much, too, you know, Madam Councilwoman. And we're so happy to have Tanya, you know, at the 19th, you know, district office. You know, we appreciate that. Same thing, too, Chair Holden, as far as just having representation at DVS with a pop-up Veteran Resource Centers to come. When it comes to, you know, when I listen to the situation you mentioned with the Catholic War Veterans on 168th and Northern Boulevard, it's, you know, this goes back to that state, you know, nonprofit capital grants program that was established, where it's a pool of, it's $5 million set aside for VSOs to apply for money to go towards capital improvements. They've placed a bandwidth of 25,000 to 75,000, as far as what's permitted, but it's something as far as a start point for it. And we, the program, the last day to apply was last week, was March 31st, though. And so we're asking that they extend it, so we can be able to do what we can to be right by folks who have these capital needs. Something I'd be remiss if I didn't say, too, last December, we shared a list of all veteran service organizations with the Speaker's office, so that it would ideally distribute from the Speaker to all members, so that all council members would know who are my VSOs in my council district, and who is contacting information. We're close to executing an agreement with the council, where, as was mentioned, we've identified more than 100,000 of the roughly 200,000 veterans in the city, as far as having contact information with each of these folks. We are close to finishing execution of an agreement with the count, with the Speaker, where she will then distribute, or her office will be able to distribute to all members. You know what we know, as far as, here are all the veterans that we're aware of within your district, as provided by DVS. And we're looking to provide that information in a drop at least once a year, at least, where when we get updated info, we will pass it to the Speaker's office, so they get it to you. It's the one plus one equals three dynamic. We can only do so much, but together, we can do so much more. And so the touches from us reaching out, and you reaching out, it can help to feed that young blood into these organizations, just for folks to, just to level set. I always say at the hearings, we've got 24.6% of the veterans in this city self-identify, based on VA data. So 24.6% of all self-identify in New York City, it's 29.7% in New York State, it's 33.1% in America. And so you see me, there are three other people you don't see. And so for us, it's about the deeper issue, too, when we talk about getting the young blood into these VSOs, to get you to step out of the shadows and be a part of this. And so we're hoping that can help with some of the things that you've brought up, you know, Madam Councilwoman.
And Commissioner, if I may, and since I know District 19 quite well, so Councilmember Palladino, thank you for really taking the effort with Councilmember Holden to allowing DVS to serve the veterans there. There are so many in Northeast Queens and in Queens County. It's the largest amount, demographic of veterans in the city, not the country. So every additional service, and Tanya, if you could, when I'm done, just you could talk about some of the services there that you're working on, it'd be tremendous to hear those stories. When you asked if you're taking the right approach, you are. And it's, we're so excited when additional council members come to the hearings, because then they can hear from your efforts and our efforts, how they can turn their council member offices into those assisting locations. Because really, applying for that grant process is a very short four-to-five, six-week window, from January to February. And then applying for it to the council member, and to the Borough President, and to the delegation, and to the Speaker, allows four different avenues for the VSOs to look for capital money. And then, yes, you can step in and apply for the grant, and work with the Borough President, if, like in Queens, they're willing to do so, to double that money. That's really the step. And until the applicant, in this case, the VSO, makes the step to apply, we can't do anything. We can just kind of guide them. So you see it on the website, you see it now in your offices. That, for hopefully by next year, 12 more months of this approach, I believe then you're going to have these over 170 organizations saying, hey, there's money there. The Commissioner's talking about state money, and Ellen's talking about grants, and Tanya's talking about the actual physical services being provided by staff. That's how we'll be able to tackle this going forward.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Nurse?
Thank you, Chair. One, just thank you so much. My my father was a 20-year veteran. My mother also is a veteran. I grew up on military bases all over the world, so happy to be on this committee. One of the things you're talking about is infrastructure and capital, and so much resource needed to get these places repaired. And I'm curious if you've explored tracks for relocation, as some of these bigger buildings are coming online, that are already subsidized by city dollars, are already subsidized by public dollars, putting them on those floors, on the ground floors, where there's community land use, already lower, lower rent, which might bring some of these posts into maybe more active commercial corridors, or just more busier areas, that might help bridge that gap. So that's one question. And then the second question I had is, in terms of bringing in younger vets who are coming in, I heard a little bit about some, like, some themes around programs, but I'm curious, like, what are the resources being committed to capacity development for a much older population, being having the capacity and skill sets to bridge some of the cultural divides? And obviously, the, you know, the wars of today are very different from the wars of the past, you know, how are you building that capacity for them to be able to organize and do outward-facing events, given that there's already the resource drain of just keeping the lights on and keeping the buildings up and running?
Thank you so much, Councilmember Nurse. I'll start, and then I'll pass it to, you know, Tanya, Ellen, to add to this. On the issue of redevelopment, the center of gravity of it is that leadership for that veteran service organization. So before COVID, we had something called the VSO Legacy Project. We were talking with our various posts about things they could do to optimize their land, something that we've seen many Houses of Worship do lately, really, starting out in Brooklyn and in other neighborhoods, where the Faith Center would say, look, let's break this down, let's build something new. Where you have housing on top, we have a newer center on the bottom. And so that's something where we had began those conversations. That's why we know it was approximately 57 VSOs that had their own land. That was from back then, pre-COVID, as far as we knew about. It was, it got stunted because of COVID, but it was also a lot of reluctance to change, because that's a decision that has to be made by each individual post. And so that is something where we are looking to begin those conversations again with our VSOs, so they can see what the pathway looks like if they were to do this, or look at a way to optimize the the resources they have. When it comes to capacity development and bridging the gap, I'll say a little bit, and then I'll defer to my colleagues here. A lot of it is, to me, us amplifying the message of our VSOs. So if an American Legion post, or Veterans of Foreign Wars Lodge, if they're doing certain activities, to make sure, you know, you may not have that in-house savviness to get it out in social media in front of those younger eyeballs, but we do. And so how can we amplify you with what we're doing in social media ourselves, what we're doing in our newsletter, with what's being done, you know, in other platforms, including, as an example, you know, ourveterans.nyc is a calendar where veterans look at different opportunities available in the community. Is this, you know, event being held by this Legion post, or by this VFW Lodge, is it there? And so that's one way we try to assist, to try to help bring in this connection. And one other thing, and I'll pass to colleagues, is we are having, it's called the Transition Assistance Program, is, it's something you have to go through when you're leaving the military. So if I'm active duty, I'm getting ready to leave, I have to spend at least two days going through a workshop, where people are preparing me for what lies ahead. Now that we know who these veterans are who are coming to New York City, we say 3,000 to 5,000, because this is based on the actual numbers we've gotten. We started our first drop arrived in September. And so once we get to an annual, I'll be able to say with certainty, this is the count, the run rate is taking us to somewhere between 3,000 to 5,000, it's based on the weekly information we're getting. We want to also have a a resource fair for those transitioning service members, where not only are employers present, but also you would have the different, you know, VSOs there as well, as a way to foster better connection, and see if we can get those touches. And so I defer to my colleagues more on this.
I would say that there are definitely many American Legions and VFWs that are thriving. And they're thriving because their sons or their daughters have become active in the local post. And they do offer a lot of sociological activities. They have bingo parties. In fact, I know there is one coming up at the American Legion in Forest Hills, for instance. They offer, you know, definitely events that are, that surround Memorial Day, as well as Veterans Day. And I'm sure that almost each month, there's something on the books for the members themselves to socialize. So I, there is a strong community. What we often find is that the members may not live locally, but they do travel back to the old neighborhood. You know, it's an opportunity for them to maybe have a drink in the, you know, bar that they used to frequent when they were younger people. There's a sense of community. I've seen that. I mean, there's, there are jazz programs in Harlem. They happen to have, you know, Bingo Night, and they're organizing a parade in Forest Hills. So there is real life to a lot of these, and they may not necessarily want to move out of their particular communities, even though their building could use desperate, you know, rehabilitation in many cases. But your idea is an interesting one, in many ways. You know, that gets to the point of, can we, you know, again, turn some of these locations into veteran housing theoretically?
I guess I would be curious.
And use it for, for, and create community space within those developments. I mean, there's a lot of creativity that I think all of us, working together collectively, could come up with some pretty interesting ideas.
Do you know how many of those that are considering redevelopment of their land that they own have moved forward?
We began the conversation before COVID. We contacted an organization, the LISC organization. They had something called NILOP, which is an acronym for something, nevertheless. And we did identify some prospective locations. But again, I, part of it is really, it gets back down to the willingness of a lot of these posts and chapters to want to, you know, change it up. And and just for a couple of examples, like, you know, in terms of reinvigorating these posts, you know, we talked a little bit about holding holistic wellness programs there, creative arts programs, employment preparedness, hosting workshops for survivors and caregivers, sponsoring informational forums at these facilities, you know, highlighting government, not-for-profit, and business services, and amplifying our message about what we do in our, in our own agency. So these are all things that we would really love to import into, into these facilities, in many cases.
I just want to add, too, that there were, of those locations, that we, there were four that were, as of right, of the locations, they could have done something turnkey. And when it comes to interest, we have to go back to square one on what was going on, because we were in these discussions. I came in this job just before COVID, and this was an ongoing discussion, where we were still in the back and forth, where it was fact-finding, for those that did express some interest. There was a very, 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 very small number, as far as that were, and not, it was, wasn't a, no, it was just a, we want to learn more.
Right.
And so that's where we are on this. But this is something we're looking to pick up right now.
And you said there's an organization that's willing, sorry, I'll be done, I don't want to take too much space. So when that happens, when they say, yes, we're interested, are you having an outside consulting group come in and talk technicality with them?
Sure, at this point in time. And the organization that initially started the conversation, we were collaborating with, oh, sorry. Because the organization didn't, had some funding from Chase, but I don't know if that funding is still there anymore. I think that they shut it down during COVID. So part of it is, you know, it gets back to, you know, trying to make this a priority. And I think collectively, we can all come up with some pretty amazing creative solutions. As a public
And I'll just jump in real quick there. Councilmember Nurse, you're right on that. These are the unexplored opportunities, right? And the power of your councilmatic district that you can jump in on, because whether it's through EDC, through planning, through looking at, once those VSOs that are identified are ownerships of that property, then you look at the zoning and the constraints and the possibilities of there, I think the future here, for these tremendous tabs of the amount of money that's needed to fix the capital projects, gets so astronomical, that the only way to save some of them may be to redevelop that property as a brand-new VSO on the first floor, with affordable housing above it, or some community programming, and centers that can be included, and create this tremendous, like Councilmember Holden said, it really is a community and create this tremendous, like Councilmember Holden said, it really is a community center, not just for the veterans, but for the families and the community to celebrate all year round. Could you imagine if we were to identify those and start to work with? So now you're getting into a situation where it may not be a grant, but it may be a developer that's going to agree to redo the VSO on the first floor and put in your vision of affordable housing for your district on top of it, along with a community center. That's the type of bold steps I think that, that we can all take.
Something here. Thank you for having me, first of all. Glad to be here. I come to you and I'm honored to be here to just add to the, the whole situation that when we partner with organizations like yours, with city council and have veteran assistants at the offices, it brings in the older generation that we speak about. And you know, I don't want to say older generation, but the elderly generation, our veterans who have served, who have fought for our country. But many are, as we mentioned earlier, generational. Many families have served from generation to generation. So when we bring in the, the elder generation who already served and we connect them to services, whatever they may be, it does set the groundwork for the generational understanding that we're here for all generations. And this is seed planting. This is the basis of relationship building. And I really want to add that this happens in time. This is an issue in terms of recruitment for VSOs. This is an issue across the country. So it's not just us. But we are honored to stand shoulder to shoulder to, with your office and with the VSOs to bring services to the community in a very real way. Just before I came here, I had the honor to assist a veteran who was, actually, he let us know that he was 100% service-connected. So he's already getting his military benefits, but because he has so many financial responsibilities, he is looking for food support, food supplement support. And we were very easily able to connect him to access the New York City Food Supplement Program SNAP. And not just that, but direct him to food pantries, veteran-run food pantries in his own borough, which he was elated. His voice lit up over the phone. And he was so, he was so grateful for the intimate and personal information where he can get in his car and drive over to a veteran-run food pantry where he's going to be able to meet his needs. So when veterans contact us, I, I think that it's relationship. It's relationship building. And people remember who helped them in a very real way.
And the population that deserves it most are the veterans. We all know that. They served our country. It's up to us to bring them services that they need to, to flourish in this, in this society. And again, many of them come back. Just if you look at the veterans who have issues, and it's, it's mostly military-related, if you, if you talk to them for any length of time. And I've spoken to a number of them, and they, especially if they were in combat. And this is what we, you know, it happened to my dad. It happened to many family members who fought in World War II, but certainly Vietnam. It was my generation. They didn't receive the proper services. They never did. And even now, they, we owe it to them, even to the point of education. But, but I like, I like your idea, Councilmember Nurse, about new development. We should look at, you know, if there, if there's a ULP in our district, take advantage of that. I, on a ULP, I put in a school where, you know, that wasn't considered. But we could start to do that and, and consider, how about a, you know, American Legion, VFW, or at least a community center that could be shared, which is, I think, a great idea. I just want to talk about collecting data and, and how we can help as a council office. We talked about a little bit about the posts in, in our district. And, and you could share what you have, and then we could fill in the blanks. And then maybe have some meetings with your office to update your list. And then we can compare notes and, and try to see what are the issues for each individual post. I know non-city projects are a big issue because I've tried to do one and it's all, you know, you have to go through a number of hurdles. And unfortunately, you know, they're not going to fund these readily. You know, if they need a complete reconstruction, it's not going to happen unless we step in and help. So just in collecting data, would you support the creation of a DVS Office of Data Management through legislation? For instance, this would allow your office to compile and analyze data on VSOs and homeless veterans and other topics where data analysis is essential to understanding and solving these problems. Would you, I know I'm putting, I'm not going to really put you on the spot, but this is, this is the information that we desperately need to serve all the veterans.
Mr. Chair, thank you so much for the question. I guess the way I'll answer it is, it's not the office that we need. It's the relationship to get the information. You know, when I came in this position, we had, you know, I'd say less than 5,000 veterans contact information. We're north of 100,000. We're on a trajectory to have almost all veterans contact information. So we'll have it. And we have the VSOs. We know how to reach them to the point where we've gotten to the speaker in the hopes that it is distributed to all council members. And so it's really the, it's not necessarily about the office data management. It's really about the marketing to these folks. For me to animate you enough to even respond when I'm asking for that data is where we are. And so I feel as though we've built a decent mechanism for learning these things. But if I have all this information about you, yet I am not able to get a response from you, I reach out. I'm not able to get what I need. It's almost like the, the center of gravity here is, is that electrical connection between us within this nervous system and not necessarily having that office. I hope that answers the question, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. I just want to, but again, I just want to, you know, the communications and obviously services available. But let's, let's get back to the, the actual physical brick and mortar of, of these halls. Because I'm, I came across most of them needing advice on insurance. And, you know, you know what DEP, I think Paul Vallone knows about this. DEP has a program where they have homeowners' insurance. They make, they make some agreements citywide. So we, we get, you know, certainly for somebody with issues on, on their waistlines or their sewer lines, there's insurance that's low cost. Could we kind of facilitate some kind of insurance for these, these halls? If we worked it out with, you know, on a, on a group basis, because 170 halls, if they all got together, and I, I know it would take some doing, but if we can work with insurance companies to, to offer lower-cost insurance like DEP does, could, could we, could we explore that, Commissioner?
We can, we can explore it and get back to you, Mr. Chair. When I listen to what you're saying, when I think about the insurance question.
You know what I'm talking about, what DEP does. You know, I don't know if you have it on your home, but if you, I have an older home. It's 100 years old. And that's, it's good insurance to have because if, if a pipe breaks and, you know, or especially if it goes to the sewer line, you're responsible and they got to dig up the street and all that. So that, that kind of insurance would be very expensive otherwise.
I think what's complicated with it is if we explore it, it's something we do in our capacity as a convenor. In other words, in our capacity as a way to say, we are able to, you know, bring folks together for those economies of scale to be achieved, not something we would do officially with the implementator of the city of New York behind it. I say that because that veterans, you know, that, that post, that lodge, it's different from a home. You've got other things occurring there. You may have a site where, you know, folks are selling alcohol and having, you know, different, you know, performances and things along those lines as far as what's done to rent the space. And so it's something where if we were to explore it, it would have to be in the context of, you know, we've brought all these different parties together to get to a one plus one equals three, but not something where we, like DEP, can do it officially through the offices of the city of New York, if that makes sense.
Right. But I think a joint insurance program should be explored. Let's look at it and we'll, we can talk as council members to these companies. And certainly if the city's willing to jump in, we could, we could talk to the appropriate agency. I'm just throwing it out there.
No, no, I get it. And I want to also point out for those that receive contracts, so folks who go through the discretionary award process, that, that MOCs does have a, you know, a way for folks for whom if you have an insurance, if you have to have insurance, receive that contract from your council member, that the Mayor's Office of Contract Services has an existing platform that'll help with that for those veteran nonprofits. And to be clear, we're open to exploring it. I just have to be careful with what we do in our capacity as a city versus what we do as able to bring these folks together and let them take advantage of opportunities.
Right. But just ideas, just like, you know, I want, I want, if your agency could think about it, how, can we do it? We'll, we'll put our heads together and we'll see if, if there's, even in marketing, you know, a lot of these halls don't know how to run, let's say, a catering hall that they have. You know, they could make more money out of it. They could actually, you know, be self-sufficient if they just knew how to market it, right, or cater it.
If I, if I can say something that speaks to, something you said and something that, that Councilmember Nurse said, at its heart sometimes too is, we're not that VSO, so it has to be a decision of that leadership. You know, when I was thinking about what you're saying, Councilmember Nurse, and it's the Local Initiative Support Corporation, it is their New York Land Opportunity Program that we're working with folks on, letting them know about, just to put it out there. Oftentimes, you may have a, a veteran service organization says, "Look, you know, our leadership, our key members here are in their 70s, 80s, in some cases 90s." Option A, we just sell this place and put the money in our account, meet elsewhere, but have a cushion for the future. That's option A. Maybe easier than option B, which is to go through all the different pieces that involve redevelopment. And so, you know, likewise, even with the insurance question, you may have veterans, we may, we can do what we can to let them know about opportunities, but the group, it's still their decision as far as how they embrace it. And they may, you know, I just don't want to speak for them. And then on your question about the business piece.
Yeah, or they could merge. They, like, we've had that in my, in some of my posts where the Vietnam vets are renting the upstairs of, of a post. That includes many wars. They, they have VFWs from Korea and Gulf and so forth. But that's where they could merge together and they could help one another. That's another option. I just don't want to lose too many of these, and we're losing them. We lost three or four in, in my district. So I'm, I'm trying to hang on. I'm trying to, but you're right. If, if they could work together and communicate, and they have. They have done that. Just a, I have a few more questions, and if my colleagues have any, just let me know. But just, just in the marketing, what I had mentioned, to help them. And again, sometimes it's just some, a retired person could jump in who's not a veteran even, but knows how to run a restaurant or a hall or a catering. We can do that locally on our level, you know, on, on the council level. But it would be nice to, to ask through your office for volunteers with that, for advice. And many times, many retired people can't wait to help others. And they, they want to be, they want to, you know, be useful and they want to help out. And certainly, you get a feel-good, obviously a feeling of doing something if you're helping veterans, especially people who haven't served. So just a question now, and this is related to your funding. You know, we heard recently that an additional 4% PEG to city agencies, you know, were handed down. And, you know, given that DVS is already the smallest and least-funded agency, and Paul, Paul Vallone knows this, how will this affect the Department of Veteran Services and your plan to, to help our veterans? Because all the things we talked about, if you're going to get further cuts, and, you know, I don't know the state of, of, you know, you could talk about how many lines are still open and that you have to fill, but then with the PEGs coming down, what is that going to mean to your agency?
So a couple of different things, and thank you for that question too, Mr. Chair. And I want to answer that, and I want to come back to something you were saying about the, just the business opportunities for the veteran organizations. We, you know, we're working with OMB as far as how to navigate these headwinds. That's one piece of it. Another piece of it is, our headcount is 35 right now at DVS. 33 of the 35 positions are filled. One position is advertised right now for someone for our Housing and Service Support Team. So someone on our team that works with veterans transitioning from homelessness into housing. And so that's a position that's open. Another position that we are looking to fill later this year is tied to the CUNY Pathways Program, to have someone on who is through a CUNY program where that person will be focused on affordable housing with us. That program dictates that that next wave will come out in August. So we're looking to fill all of what we have as far as attacking our vacancies. In addition to go to nyc.gov/jobs, our newsletter, we always list openings there as far as things, when it comes to college aid opportunities or opportunities with job employment at DVS or even opportunities on the internship side of things with us. And that's nyc.gov/vetmedia, or you can go to nyc.gov/vetnewsletter. And you'll get that, and so people can see in that most recent newsletter where we post this. But to be clear, right now, we're looking to hire someone for our Housing and Support Services Team. And later this year, we'll be looking at the CUNY Pathways Program as a way to bring a recent CUNY graduate in, help us with affordable housing.
You also take volunteers.
I want to, I want to, I'm going to turn it to Tanya and Ellen about volunteers too, about, you know, some things there with RSVP, with New York Serv, as far as different entities that we plug in with on the volunteer side. I want to also mention, you know, we are doing what we can to avidly seek other opportunities as far as VA-related opportunities, if we think about grants that we also apply for as an agency. When we look at our, you know, philanthropic partners, we had great experiences in your district at Juniper Park last year, for instance, where donations from the Penn Fed Foundation allowed us to build more than 200 tables and chairs for formerly homeless veterans.
Great program, by the way.
So yeah, so we're, we're trying to work, one plus one equals three is something we always say at the agency. And even looking at the, you know, with the VA, things like the VA Work Study Program to bring in, you know, GI Bill recipients who are currently student veterans to work with us. And so we're always looking for different ways to, to, and then hello fresh with the food as far as having that private entity, which is a reason we've gotten more than a million meals out to veterans. And so we're always trying to find ways to meet mission. We're recognizing these are tough times. I want to just defer to Tanya and Ellen. Anything else on the volunteer side, Mr. Chair?
Also, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. I would like to add that as President of the American Legion Auxiliary, from that hat, I do see that there are plenty of people who just need a vehicle to serve. They want to serve the military community. They just need a vehicle. And we could help with that. We could connect them to assisting the military community through volunteerism. They're open for it.
nyc.gov/vetvolunteer.
Great. That's great. And do we, are we getting, we're getting people registered as, as helping? Because I would love to recruit, like I said, people who have managed restaurants, who are retired, who have managed catering halls. Because there are some in my district that have these halls, but they don't really, they could do more functions and, and make some money. They, they do smaller events, but maybe they could do more and make money. But that would be some, something that if we could recruit them.
Yeah, so my, my husband was in the restaurant business.
There you go.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, he's, he's passed. But the reality of it is that, yeah, I mean, I grew up where, you know, he disappeared on Friday nights because he had to cook because the chef didn't show up. So, I mean, I, I lived that life for a while. Good thing I told him to change his job, to be honest with you.
Yeah, no, but it's, it's, if we could just put the word out.
Yeah, but I mean, yeah, I mean, those, but again, there has to, when you're making, you know, this match, you have to make sure that there's a willing partner on, on the other side. And that's a real sensitive area, and we have to approach that very delicately, to be honest with you. But I appreciate it. I mean, one of the things that we are using our volunteers for is we're training a, a number of volunteers through the Retired Senior Volunteer Program to go ahead and record the stories of veterans who are residing in St. Albans, at, at the nursing home in St. Albans. And we're in the middle, middle of training those veterans, I'm sorry, those volunteers in order to record the stories. So there are some really wonderful, creative ways in how, in how to use volunteers in, in many cases.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks.
Just to give you an example, but yes, I, you know, certainly for those that wish to learn more about, you know, the, the, how to go ahead. A lot of times, you know, the rentals, at least my experience, is that they bring in an outside caterer. So they rent the space because that's really affordable, and then they decorate and they rent, and they bring in the outside caterer separately. So it's a, it's kind of an interesting combination in many cases. So, thank you.
If I could say two things about the business side of it. Our Veteran Business Leadership Association helps any veteran-led venture, not just for-profit ventures. And so that's nycvbla.org, nycvbla.org. And so we have folks standing by to provide technical assistance to any who lead a veteran venture, be it a nonprofit, be it a for-profit, be it a 501(c)(19). And also, I'll do my homework, Mr. Chair, to see if we can get SCORE added to our website and if they too will help veteran-related nonprofits. We all know SCORE provides older mentors for for-profit entities. We can see if a SCORE, which is a, you know, the SCORE NYC chapter, if this is something they'll, they'd be willing to do with our, because I love what you're saying.
Even business people, but just, just to, if they could, you know, raise more money. And that's all, I think there's a lot of areas, and we'll identify, at least our council offices can do that. Just meet with the posts and see what their greatest needs are, see, you know. Just meet with the posts and see what their greatest needs are, see, you know, see how they could improve their, you know, you know, at least fix the building up by, by turning a better profit. And we'll see if we can reach out and we'll work on that. We've been joined by Councilmember Ariola, a member of the committee. And I have one other question and then I'll, I'll turn to my colleagues again if they have any areas. The Borden Avenue homeless, Veterans Homeless Shelter. I had worked with, and this committee worked with Commissioner Jenkins when he was here to, to try to return the Borden Shelter to individual rooms where the veterans, first of all, veterans shouldn't be in a, in a homeless shelter. I mean, that's my feeling, that's most of our, the feeling of my colleagues too. They need supportive housing, transitional housing. They need a lot more support and they don't need congregate shelters. And so we fought, and they used to have individual rooms at Borden until that, the city took half of it away that they're running. And only the VA part has the individual room. So Commissioner Jenkins has promised that he was going to change that and go back to the individual rooms to give everyone there, all the veterans, privacy. Have you, do you have an update on that? Because?
Thank you so much, Mr. Share. Yes, we do have an update. So it's eight weeks at most until completion of that project. So you know, so that is, it's underway as far as execution of, of this work.
So eight weeks, we should have it sometime in June, you think?
We've been told, yeah, because DHS, Department of Homeland Services told us this should be completed within eight weeks.
Okay, all right, great. So that's good news. And they, so I guess they ordered it. I'll have to talk to DHS. But I, and again, just speaking to the, to the veterans there, many have served 10, 15, 20 years. And they have something to offer, but they shouldn't be, you know, in a congregate setting. And I said that, and, and all of them that I, that I spoke to said the same thing, that they would love to stay in the individual rooms. And I think after serving 15, and one, one gentleman, 20 years in the Marines, I think he deserves, that's the least he deserves, but he certainly deserves supportive and transitional housing. And I, I know your office is working hard on that, that area too.
I want to, since we're talking about this, an issue with Borden that we're dealing with, we're thinking through how to attack it, attack it is convincing the residents for whom supportive housing is the, is the ideal fit to move into supportive housing. There's reluctance to it. There's a certain impression that folks have about supportive housing and we're trying to get the word out to our residents there that, you know, this is not, you know, not, not your, not your mother's supportive housing, your father's supportive housing, that this is a different way to look at this. And so that's its own piece of this puzzle. We have folks who are reluctant to explore supportive because their own impressions of what it is. And so that's just something else that's going on underneath, you know, the surface that we're working on with our Borden community and with all, within our, our shelter community.
Great, great. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions? Councilmember Nurse?
Not so much a question, well, maybe it's a question. We have a, um, a, a, a property owner that's trying to develop veteran housing over by Broadway Junction, so I'd love to talk with you all about, they want to do social services on the bottom and 100% veteran housing on the top. But actually there, some of the challenges is, is really getting some of the other agencies to move quick enough so they're not bleeding out money trying to move these projects. And so I'm curious, you know, how you all are supporting when there are projects like that in the works? How you all are kind of jumping in to help these folks navigate city agencies or being an additional supportive voice on this?
What we've done in situations like this, Councilmembers, it's, it's really, it's the state program for supportive housing, the Empire State Supportive Housing Initiative, where we will always write support letters for those developers who apply. For the past two rounds, round six, round seven, we've written, I believe it's four support letters, two for each iteration. Ellen helped quarterback that. And so we have at least 250 units in the pipeline now to be built. And so for us, the way that we typically add value when a developer comes and says, hey, look, we want to build supportive for veterans, we say, look, if you apply to ESHI, we will get your support letter and we send one that is not only included with the application, we send it directly to the ESHI working group to let them know this is important to us. And so we feel like that's a way we can help add value, because so far for each entity for which we have done this, things have worked out. And we work closely with the supportive housing network of New York also, Councilmember, to make sure that people know that if you build it, they will come and we'll help ensure they come as far as the rent up. So we're happy to connect further with you.
Yeah, I'd love, I'd love your helping and, and helping to expedite them getting like what they need to get in the pipeline for construction because they're just bleeding out. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and your staff for a great testimony and let's, let's continue to work together. Thank you, Paul Vallone. Hope you're feeling well and you're, you're back 100%. See you at the next hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to take a five-minute break and then we'll call the next panel.
I can hear myself very well. Anyway, so a lot of good things I heard and I'm, I'm glad I'm in Councilwoman Holden's district. Well, right outside it. I live in Sunnyside, Queens, and, and Councilwoman Palladino's in that neighboring district. I noticed Councilwoman Holden and Ms. Palladino do a lot for the veterans. I, I, I only got active with the veterans. I retired about, about four years ago. I worked for New York City Transit for 40 years. And, you know, I don't know where to begin. I heard a lot of good stuff. And you're talking about the Vietnam veterans. You're talking about bringing together the young veterans together with the, the Vietnam veterans. Let me just say, you know, when I got out of the service, they turned around and a lot of us, we went about our merry way. And I believe most of the Afghanistan veterans and the Iraqi veterans are doing the same thing. We don't need the VA. We're okay. And we just went about our lives. Needless to say, you know, when I got out, I, I, I filed for PTSD. I was denied right away. Back then, everybody was denied. I had a good friend of mine, he was really in bad shape, got lost an eye, you know, really got messed up in battle. He went to the VA and they only gave him 40% at that time. And the man was really a mess. And needless, during, during the course of the years, he kept going back and they finally gave him 100%. I don't know how recent it was, but that's what they did. I knew a lot of guys, you know, back then, you know, and I'm, I feel sorry for the younger, younger veterans because I knew another guy, I'll give you, I get a million stories where there's one, he was a hardcore Marine, stayed in Vietnam, maybe two tours, came back to the United States, and this was in Forest Hills. And we all hung out in bars, you know, back then. We all came, we came home, we hung out in the bar. And this guy was strapping. This guy like would take on anybody. Came back, he, he lasted maybe about a year and a half and he died of cancer. Nobody knows. I don't, I'm sure nothing ever happened of that, but this guy, there was no reason, you know, to be ill like that. And within about a year and a half after he got out, he was dead. And it was, I'm sure there's only one of many, you know, many, many things that went on. Even today, the, the effects of Agent Orange, I'm glad that the Vietnam Veterans of America brought that up, you know, from the beginning, fought hard to get, get it, get that in, in as a disease with this PACDAC. You know, now everybody, everybody's on board with the PACDAC, getting new symptoms, new diseases affiliated with the toxins that are out there. The, the heavy lead, the heavy, heavy metals and stuff like that. You know, it's a shame. I listened again and we talked about Veteran Services. It's kind of hard for me, as I said, I didn't get active, truthfully, I didn't get active with the Vietnam veterans up until about four, five years ago, more or less at the beginning of the pandemic. I, I didn't need it. I had a good job. I had good benefits and so on and so forth. So I, I kept putting, I'm okay. I'm okay. Don't worry about it. I'm, I'm all right. You know, I was denied PTSD, you know, back then. I, I more or less survive, suffer from survivor's guilt. To this day, if I start thinking about it, I feel bad that I survived and the other guys didn't, or my friend who got 40% on disability. Excuse me. But anyway, you know, the big thing today I, I see is the young, the young Afghanistan and Iraqi veterans. They don't know what they're in for with these, with these dioxins that are around, you know, they, I, God forbid that, you know, down 10, 15, 20 years from now, they have these diseases, you know, these, I don't know what you would call them, due to, to, due to, due to the toxins that they, they encountered. Look, look at Camp Lejeune. They're, they're going crazy with Camp Lejeune. And that's only one of many, you know, we've, we've, we've lived through, you know, me growing up, my mother would say a little dirt. You used to do the five-second rule. If it fell on the floor, you got five seconds to pick it up and eat it and everything will be fine, you know? But we were so used to, you know, that and that was our way. And that was old school. But, you know, these days, you know, you look at, you look at the veterans, they, they, you don't do enough for veterans. You really, you really don't. You know, I just look at it, as I said, I worked for 40 years. I had my own medical and so on and so forth. And I didn't need, I said, no, I don't need the VA. I don't need their medical. Then when, what happened was when the pandemic hit, I went to the VA to get my, this is a perfect example, I went and got my COVID shot at the VA at St. Albans. I also asked, can I bring my wife? No, your wife is not COVIDed. How could that be? You know, you talk about veterans and veteran services. Why not spouses? Why not? I have, forgot about this. I have two sons from, from a previous marriage. I have a, my oldest son is 43 from my first marriage. My youngest guy is 33 from this marriage. And both of them have the same Attention Deficit Disorder or Speech Impairment. There's no history in my whole life that there's any kind of disorder whatsoever in my, in my medical history or so on, so forth. I hope I don't need that. But I went to the VA and I said, listen, you know, how could that be? Two wives, two separate, two different women's, and my sons have the same ailment. Well, they're not, they don't count because they're not, they're not you. It's not, it's not you, so they don't count. That was 30 years ago, 40. So I let it go. And that's one, that's for my, that's my, my siblings, my kids, you know, so that was that. And again, as I said, I came into the, I came into the VBA, started getting active. I've been a member for maybe 20 years only because my wife worked for John Rowan's wife and she enrolled me into the Vietnam Veterans of America and I paid my dues and so on and so forth. When I went to the, when I went to St. Albans, as I said, I got my COVID shot and I wasn't in the system four years ago, three, four years ago. And I've been out of, I got out of service in 1971. And, you know, I turned around and, you know, I, I, I went in, I got into the system. you know, I, I went in, I got into the system. They gave me a hearing test. They said, they looked at each other, I swear, they, they looked at each other and said, do you think this, do you think your hearing is related to your service? I said, well, I drove convoy over in Vietnam and the artillery shells were going up. I said, most likely it started that way. They asked me about ringing in my ears at the time. And I said, ring, I said, boy, I'm way beyond that. You know, forget the ringing in my ears. My ears, I'm just tone deaf, you know. And they looked at each other and they, they, they gave me 20% disability. And, you know, I, I think it's, it was a little too late for it. I accepted it because they gave it to me, and only because of COVID that I,
But, but that, that seems, that seems to be a pattern, because I, I went through, my dad, a 20-year battle, and he finally got 100%, just a couple of years before he passed. And that was a struggle. We'd, we'd go down and plead our case, and it fell on deaf ears. And eventually, we got it. But like many service members, it's, it's almost too late sometimes.
Exactly.
And you, you told me some stories. I remember talking to you about, you know, your issues and some of the issues of your fellow veterans. You got involved late, but there, there's a host of, of issues now with, with the, the post.
Yes.
Paying rent, you combined with another post, and it's a very successful post, but they have issues with the building. And I know the, the space you're renting needs upgrade, needs to be upgraded. And that's what we're trying to do with this hearing, is try to, you know, find out the issues. You got involved relatively, you know, like, I guess within the five years, you said, you got involved with the post?
Yeah, about four years ago, yes.
What was the reason why you didn't reach out to a post? You didn't know about it, or you just didn't, thought you didn't need to, to get together with fellow veterans?
Right.
From the Vietnam War?
What happened with us is, like you're saying, with the post, if I get into that, again, I'm, I'm doing a catch-up right now on what the issues are with the post. We moved into Kowalinski Post, you know, the Polish Post, about three, four years ago. And then after the flood, I think it was Hurricane Ida, the name of it was. And I remember you just saying, they were under five feet of water. Now, they're still suffering, you know, they're still, you talk about insurance for the post, so on and so forth. And I remember talking to the, the commander of that post, and it's, it's like $200,000 in damage. And they didn't have insurance because it's a, it's like a veterans' post, you know? And it just cost them to do plumbing. Somebody said about plumbing. It just, out of pocket was $20,000. And now also with that, like you're saying, membership has dwindled. I think since the pandemic, a lot of Vietnam veterans, they're old, they don't want to come out. They want to do Zoom meetings. So like you're saying, is where the, the membership is dwindling. I belong to the Kowalinski Post. I, I joined that chapter also. And, yeah, they, and we go on a monthly basis, and their monies, they don't have the money. They're nickel and diamond. The best thing that ever happened to them, they say, thank God that the Viet, you know, the Vietnam veterans came in and we, we helped them. We're helping them to survive. And this is, this post, Polish Post, been in there for 100 years.
Right.
You know, and, and all of that stuff.
It was named after a veteran of World War I, so it's, it's over 100 years old.
Yes, yes.
The post. And, all right, we thank you so much for your, your testimony. And again, keep working. And I know that just the, the post continues to help you just with your, your veteran colleagues, just, just to talk, just to talk about the issues that you faced and you all faced together. So we thank you for your testimony.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate what you're doing for Queens and all of that, and Vicki also, and Bomb, and everybody else.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you for your time. And I could go on for days, you know, about what's going on.
Thank you, Lenny. Thank.
But like you're saying,
Appreciate it.
We don't, there's not enough being done for the veterans themselves.
We know that.
Especially you're saying Borden Avenue, I can get into that. Borden Avenue's been there for 30, 40 years. And I, I passed by there on my job almost every day for the last 30, 40 years. And it's, it's a garbage. It's a garbage dump. Back then. I don't know how it is these days, because you,
We're trying to improve it, but we're, I,
Yeah, well, you've been, you've, since you've been active.
We don't need it, we,
But 25, 30 years ago, it was, it was in shambles. And that's the way it was when I, when I was coming through, you know,
Thank you.
Through the years. So I wish, I thank you very much for the time.
Thanks so much, Len. Thank you.
And keep up, keep fighting for us, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next witness, Ryan Graham, District One, Department of New York Veterans of Foreign Wars.
Welcome. Well, my, me, my printer broke, so I had to email myself. Good afternoon and thank you to the members of the Committee on Veterans and Chairman Bob Holding for holding this hearing to discuss the state of Veteran Service Orgs throughout New York City. My name is Ryan Graham, Chairman of the Legislative Committee for District One of the Department of New York, District One of, District One, my apologies, of the Department of New York, is comprised of 21 VFW posts and over 2,000 members. Having served in conflicts ranging from World War II to Korea, Vietnam and Desert Storm, Operation Enduring Freedom and Operation Iraqi Freedom, as well as smaller combat operations over the prior years. Since our inception in 1899, the VFW was congressionally chartered in 1936 under the presidency of Franklin D. Roosevelt, and currently counts 1.2 million members, not including members of the Auxiliary, and thousands of posts across the United States, as well as abroad throughout Europe, the Far East and Central America. The mission of the VFW is to foster camaraderie among the United States veterans of overseas conflict, to serve our veterans, the military, and our communities, and to advocate on behalf of all veterans. While not inclusive of the entire population of veterans and posts throughout the Five Boroughs, VSOs also include District Two of the VFW, which includes Staten Island, Manhattan, and the Bronx, as well as other organizations such as the American Legion, Catholic War Vets, the VVA, and I can go on and on, whom provide nearly identical services to those that served and the communities they belong to. Over the years, while VSOs continue to thrive in municipalities and towns outside of New York City's borders, organizations such as the VFW continue to see a decline in posts throughout the city. While infrastructure needs and older buildings need, need continuous and more frequent maintenance, Veteran Service Orgs are no exception to this compounding problem. Due to non-compliance with rules and regulations, VSOs are unfairly targeted with heavy penalties as if they were a profitable business. Furthermore, extensive agency red tape, lack of inter-agency coordination, as well as mismanagement of cases in resolving such issues hinders timely resolution. Ray Ramos, he, he's, he's going to be on Zoom, Post Commander of Queensborough Hill VFW Post 3427 in Flushing, and also a member of our committee for the District Legislative Committee, who himself will be testifying, was a prime example to the years-long issues his post had closed over. What started as a non-fatal boiler issue ended up with Queensborough Hill VFW draining their accounts and nearly closing their doors for good. Issues such as the Queensborough Hill VFW are not a one-time problem. While some posts continue to struggle due to unfair violations, as if they were a for-profit business, others have unfortunately closed over the prior years due to policies that don't take into account a federally issued 501(c)(19) nonprofit status. Just as important, while nonprofit organizations like the VFW do pull in revenue, it is just enough to cover necessary overhead costs and programs supporting veterans and the communities. When a VFW must pay a fine, it reduces its effectiveness and mission. Besides a need for common sense policy updates on summonses, policies regarding taxes need to be updated to reflect a nonprofit organization. While some buildings owned by some VFW posts aren't fully tax-exempt, others are not. Full property tax exemption should be streamlined down from the federal level and must be reflected in agency codes. Furthermore, although discretionary funding is open to nonprofit organizations ending every February, the application process is too broad and does not reflect options specifically tailored for VSOs. Largely cumbersome, VSOs are deterred or are unable to apply due to non-relevant upload requirements and requests. Lastly, it is our belief that with a robust operations and support services and programs, the New York City Department of Veteran Services can become a much stronger partner to VSOs throughout the Five Boroughs. For the 2022-2020-2023 budget, DVS was allocated just under $6 million. 61st out of 151 budgetary allocated agencies on a $107 billion budget. Well below 1%. When I did the math on that, it, it was hard to register how far below total budget. Furthermore, the DVS allotted budget is well below other key and necessary city agencies and just above fiscal spend for community boards. So this gives an idea what DVS is considered as far as compared to other agencies. And it's not just reflective of just the agency itself, but veterans in general throughout the city. In addition, an enhancement of DVS services, personnel, and training on VSOs can serve as a streamlined and efficient partner to our organization, organizations, directly or via agency liaisons with other city agencies. Also, it's, it's also important that other city agencies are trained on nonprofit organizations, not just VSOs, but there are other nonprofits out there. In conclusion, the approach to fines, taxes, and other lingering issues should not be seen as a one-size-fits-all. Besides updates to rules and regulations, agencies need to be trained and knowledgeable on the differences between for-profit businesses and nonprofit organizations such as the VFW. VSOs should not be viewed as a revenue stream, but as a community partner assisting those that served and providing assistance to our longstanding record and providing service to our communities. Thank you once again for the opportunity to speak today. And following other introductions, testimony, we will have other leadership. They will be coming on via Zoom.
Right.
Including the District Commander. I believe the Chief of Staff for the Department of New York should be on too. We welcome your questions and comments. Thank you.
So the agencies you were talking about, Department of Buildings?
Yes.
What other, what other agencies should, should understand who you are as, you know, posts and VFWs? And not a business. What other agencies are, is it, do you run into Department of Finance issues? Do you run into, you know, property tax issues? Tell, tell us something a little bit about that.
Well, from what I know, and then like I said, some, some other people will hop on, Brendan Gibbons, he's also part of the committee, and Brendan, he's Post Commander out in Middle Village. He's, he's also pretty, he's, he knows the taxes pretty well. But the Department of Buildings, that's started with Ray Ramos, Department of Finance, Department of Health, I know that's been an issue for a while. I know years ago, there was a post in Forest Hills that shut down due to, I, I can't remember exactly what it was, but just silly violations.
Or Consumer Affairs, you might have some,
Consumer Affairs, yes.
Yeah. Now, did you also run into, I think you might have mentioned Utilities? Because we, we did meet with some of the posts who said they're being charged as a business. Have you, have, what responses have, have you gotten that in, in your group? Where you get charged a greater fee for electricity because of the address of the post is, is business? And, and we, we know of a lot of posts just hitting a dead end on that, which we, you know, we, again, I think there should be a task force on this, that we can create and, and iron out all these difficulties. Like a post that has to, that is in a commercial space should not be charged as a business. You're not money-making, you're not making money on the location, you know? Or if you are making money, you're just enough to survive. So I think that, that's why we really need everybody at the table to really, once and for all, solve these issues. But I know you're going to have a lot of other members testify.
Oh, yes. The Utilities, actually, I know the District Commander, Neil Jordan, he, he'll probably go into detail on that. I know there's been a lot of conflicting information. I know that the Utilities for VSOs, there's, we're, we're supposed to be charged at a residential rate and not a commercial rate. There's supposed to be information where it's supposed to be free.
Right.
So, but yeah, that, that's something that Neil, you,
All right, so we'll, we'll talk some more, but we'll, we'll hear from your other members. But thank you so much for your testimony. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Thanks so much.
Next witness, Brendan Gibbons, Haspel Stah, Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 551.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
We hear you.
Okay, good morning. Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you to all the Councilmembers and Commissioners and everyone else that's there in the committee for having this hearing today. I myself am the Commander of VFW Post 551, located in Middle Village, New York. I am also a member of the Kowalinski Post, Catholic War Veterans Post 870, and American Legion Post 460, all within New York City. One of the reasons I wanted to be here today to speak was obviously, like you brought up, Department of Finance, different agencies where we really have no connection, unfortunately, with the VSOs. It's difficult for us to really speak to them and get, you know, information. For instance, Department of Finance, if you didn't have that night with Department of Finance coming over to your office, Councilmember, I wouldn't be able to have saved or gotten a higher percentage on property tax for our building. Unfortunately, our post, like most posts in the city, have been closing. So back in 2016, we had to sell an old building that we had because we had no funding. Fortunately, we were able to purchase another building within the district, and we were able to put some money into it that we had left over. But what it comes down to is, just like all the other VSOs, we really have no steady source of income other than donations. So I know that's one of the things that, it's the most important thing in talking about different ways that we can receive funding, obviously, from the city or any other grants or things that are available. Other than that, I, we do appreciate and thank you very much for putting forward this bill that would give us the 120-day period, if any other violations come in. But like you said, it would be great to have some sort of task force or something where we'd have a one-stop shop to go to that can speak amongst each other instead of just hitting us with fines and making it extremely difficult for us with no proper funding, obviously, as a nonprofit. And the only other thing mostly that I wanted to bring up was the red tape with some of the, with the paperwork is very difficult. And like Ryan brought up, there's issues where most members don't know how to go through it. I've tried myself, and I guess I could put myself in the category of one of the younger veterans in a veterans' organization, but I'm knowledgeable with computers and stuff, but even what I've gone through and tried to look at is extremely difficult. So any help that we can get throughout the process would be great. As well as, I heard Department of Veteran Services speak about multiple things, but I can say this. I've been the Commander of my post for 10 years, and I've never, ever been contacted by Department of Veteran Services. They mention all these different grants or programs that were put up available, other than looking at their website. In those 10 years, I've never had any contact with them unless it was at a legislative meeting set up through all the VFWs.
Thanks for your testimony, Brendan. This is, this will change, by the way. I just want to ask, and that's why we want to create a task force. But I just want to ask you about just running the day-to-day operations from the post, Haspel Stah. Tell us about, you, you moved into a commercial spot. Are you getting charged for electric rates for a commercial location?
When I talked to Con Ed initially when we set it up, they told me that it would be the residential rate. I would need to double-check to make sure. Like I said, sorry if you didn't hear me. When I signed, we will be setting the building up, I did speak to Con Ed, and then they told me they would put it at residential rates. I do need to double-check that to, to see. But when it comes to, I just received another letter in the mail from the city because we did, Because we did argue about our property taxes, they sent me a letter stating that we have to fill out by June because we have a storefront property that they want to know who's utilizing it or if we're going to be exempt, because obviously, the city's looking to see if we're making money that they can charge us on. And obviously, we use the storefront ourselves, but we have to fill out something which I've never seen before. We just received it this year, and it states that I must fill it out by June.
All right, please let, you know, keep in touch with my office on this. We'll work on it together, and we'll see, and we'll also meet with, I don't know if your heating is with National Grid, or we'll work that out, and we'll try to get you the services that you certainly need. And any other information that you're having trouble with, just, you know, we're not that far. You're not that, and again, you've contacted my office several times, and we'll work together, try to get over some of the hurdles. But thank you, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Next witness is Neil K. Jordan, Veterans of Foreign Wars.
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioner and Committee. I heard a lot of talk about the electric bills. First, let me introduce myself. My name is Neil Jordan. I'm the district commander for the VFW. I'm also the post commander of VFW Post 1896 and post commander of American Legion Post 1946. The utility bills, under Public Service Law 76, you can have your staff look that up, Commissioner. In that law, it states that no utility entity such as electric, gas, or water shall charge a VFW post or any veteran organization a bill. That's basically what it's saying. In my fight with Con Edison on this, Con Edison actually acknowledged it, and they actually prioritized my bill for one year, where they went back and reviewed my bill, the bill for my American Legion post, and they went back and changed it to a residential bill. Now, I'm trying to do the same thing with National Grid for both my electric and gas, and I'm hitting a roadblock on that right now. But I'm making it available, I had made it available to all my posts that they need, and also available to the Queens Borough President. And the four posts, we're trying to get together where we could tackle this as a community of VSOs. The grants, capital grants, I know that capital grants, the state has a $5 million budget allocated for just veterans, but in order to get the grant, you have to spend the money, and that's where the problem is. The post don't have the money to spend and then apply for these grants to get them. So, you know, catch 22 situations there. If there's somewhere we can, you know, if we can find friendly, how should I say, people in construction that were able to wait for that money until after receive our grant to do the work, that would be great. I got a view, somewhat of a view, I heard that the state budget, I know you may not have anything to do with that, but right now, the state budget that's being proposed, as far as they're looking to cut $125,000 away from our service officers. That's going to be a hard hit. Actually, I have a form letter that's going to go out to my posters to get to their elected officials to let them know that we can't have this. There was a big issue a couple of years ago about the VA closing. That has not gone away. And I hope DVS and your committee would stay on top of this. This still, they're still looking to close the St. Albans and Manhattan VAs or refurbish them as they claim. But that still has not gone away. That is still a part of the table, is being done in a small way. One of the other agencies that you was asking Ryan about would be the Parks Department. I just had to shell out over $10,000 to the Parks Department for trees because I renovated my building, and part of their law was that the city thing is that we have to plant trees every 25 feet because of a walkway. I have no area in front of my building to park, to plant the trees, but they said, well, since you don't have the area to plant it, now you have to pay for the trees anywhere, and we'll plant them wherever we seem fit. I can't even choose where I want to plant the trees that I have to pay for. So I just had to shell out over $10,000 for trees. I have no idea where they are.
And you, hold, just one second, Mr. Jordan, you paid that already? You paid the $10,000?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did. My, my, my post happened to be one of the more, how should I say, lucky post in the, my post is, my post is one of the lucky posts in the district. We had veterans that took care of investing money and made sure that the veterans coming behind them had something to work on, and that's what we, and that's where we got the money from. Right now, we're going through a renovation. We've been going through it now for about six years, and it's one thing after another with these agencies and trying to get my post reopened again. Right now, we just had another inspection this morning from the fire department. I'm hoping it's the last one, so I don't know. I'm hoping to be open by Memorial Day. What else? Basically, that is it. Like I said, I, I support a lot of the veterans. I know Tanya. I, I have four VSOs in my area, Post 1946, 1893, 5298, which is another VFW post, and our 483. And we all sort of work sort of close together here in the southeast Queens areas. We also support the food pantry. I know most of you all know retired Major Sharon Lindsay. She has four food pantries here that, in this area, that support veterans. I also manage one of those pantries for her out here in my neighborhood. So I sit around and wait for any questions that you may have, but otherwise, that is my testimony right now.
Thank you so much, Mr. Jordan. By the way, on the electrical, I remember you telling me about that, that you were paying, when we did meet, you told me that you were paying commercial rates at that location. And so that's why we brought this up, and we, this hearing was really, to really help your organizations, but I just want to thank you for all the work you do for veterans. I mean, it's tireless work, but just the fact that you run into this bureaucratic red tape, like for instance, for the Parks Department or for utilities, that shouldn't be. And so I would say, in the future, please reach out to my office and this committee and to DVS that we can help you. And I would have reached out to the Parks Department had I had known, and I think all the council members here would have also, to say, look, you can't make the VFW, you can't make this post spend $10,000 on trees that are going in other locations, and that's what, that's essentially what's happened here. So we'll look into that, and this, these, this is exactly what I'm talking about, and I thank you for educating me last year about this situation that we could, we could try to remedy, and you won't have in the future have to deal with this. But certainly with the utilities, and we could certainly act on your behalf, but more importantly, for city agencies, we can certainly, and so can DVS, fight these regulations that really shouldn't pertain to, again, your posts that you're working hard. Like you said, you're doing food pantries, you're doing veteran services on a constant basis, and you're facing so many hurdles. You should never have to pay for $10,000 for trees, and we'll certainly talk to the Parks Department about that one. But thank you, Mr. Jordan. Thanks for all your work. Thanks for your testimony.
Next witness, Kimberly Moore.
Good afternoon.
Pressed the, you pressed a button? Okay.
Good afternoon, dear Chairperson Holden, council members, esteemed colleagues. Thank you for the Committee on Veterans, for the honor and privilege to testify before you today. My name is Dr. Kimberly Moore, Director of the CARE Cafe Program at Yeshiva University's Wertzweiler School of Social Work. CARE Cafe is our community-based program, providing psychoeducational pop-up support cafes throughout the New York metro area. Our students and faculty have pioneered a targeted model of embedding CARE Cafe programs in local community institutions. A portion of CARE Cafe's funding is designated for Veterans Services. Over the last year, the CARE Cafe Program has strengthened and expanded our partnerships with the goal of effectively engaging with service members and veterans across various areas of health promotion, including but not limited to suicide prevention, psychoeducation training series, psychological first aid, life transitions, career exploration, and nutrition. However, connecting veterans, service members, and their families to necessary services and entitlements still continues to be a challenge due to their unidentified status. The question remains, where are the veterans? To this end, it is essential that proactive efforts to outreach service members and veterans within and across a wider range of networks must remain a priority. By focusing on a process of pre-screening at all levels of service, not just at a program intake session, the propensity to identify service members and veterans may increase significantly and support minimizing service delivery gaps across the spectrum. As practitioners, we are reminded that screening and assessment are ongoing activities. One of our strongest allies has been the Bronx Vet Center, whose members have attended several community events, engaged veterans and service members, and jointly organized efforts to support them with getting needed care on the spot. Some of these outreach efforts have been on the street, at faith institutions, at day programs, and on-site at residential shelters. Additionally, while utilizing research methodologies such as focus groups and conducting organized and targeted needs assessments at various points in time across programming, service providers' knowledge can be expanded and informed by the expert testimony of the service member or veteran populations which drive service delivery. It is important to note that special attention has been given to collaborative planning, designing, and implementation of programming within the Wertzweiler School of Social Work and our veteran-serving community partners. These efforts have included offering instruction around the theoretical foundations of social work, group practice, such as empowerment and mutual aid models, which serve to ground and streamline peer-based programmatic strategies more effectively. As practitioners and community-based organizations, an opportunity exists for us to provide services grounded in strengths-based foundations, utilizing peer-centered approaches, active listening, and express empathy. We see time and time again the values of togetherness and eagerness to learn and the manifestations of the proverb, "Each one teach one," as a model for connecting people, promoting strength, and resiliency. Finally, during this special time, we also acknowledge the 20th anniversary of Operation Iraqi Freedom, remembering the more than 4,000 service members who gave their lives and more than 30,000 wounded during battle. We are reminded about the bravery and sacrifices of each of them. We also remember the loved ones of our fallen service members who are still with us, we remember. It is with clarity and acknowledgement that we continue to advance toward improving the efforts to serve service members and veterans. You are not forgotten. Finally, on behalf of the Yeshiva University's Wertzweiler School of Social Work CARE Cafe Program, we thank you for this opportunity to share at today's meeting, and we look forward to continuing to serve the greater community at large. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your excellent testimony. How many employees do you have, or workers in your office?
Well, we have me, the director of the program, and we have the wonderful students of the Wertzweiler School of Social Work MSW program and PhD program who serve and assist with facilitating our program.
Do you have evening hours, because some of the students are going in the evening? Because I taught in the university, CUNY.
Yes.
And in our campus, we didn't always have weekend, we had weekend classes, but not weekend personnel working the veterans' office or evening, so that they missed that. Do you have?
Yes, we do. We have programming during the day, in the evening, and on the weekends, and our services to the CARE Cafe Program are during the day, on the evening, and on weekends as well.
And how many students do you, do you serve, do you think, per semester? Do you have a number on that?
Yes, my program has about four students. We're going to be expanding now to about 10 for this program because of the needs, but we're continuing to grow, and we want to make sure we raise awareness about our program services to help program infrastructure.
Again, thank you for your service.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next witness, Peter Kempner, Volunteers of Legal Services, Inc.
Thank you, Councilmember. Good afternoon. My name is Peter Kempner. I'm the legal director of Volunteers of Legal Service, also known as VALS. VALS is Veterans Initiative, which is part of our senior law project, strives to empower older New York veterans to be able to age in place with dignity and respect. We do this by providing them the ability to plan for the future. We draft Last Will and Testaments, powers of attorney, healthcare proxies, living wills, and other advanced directives for our clients. These documents enable our clients to be able to make their dying wishes clear, empower their caregivers, and make sure that they're able to live and strive in the community for as long as possible. We also value strong community partnerships. The Veterans Initiative provides support and training to social workers, healthcare providers, and family caregivers. We work closely with older adult centers and other community-based organizations with physical locations to hold educational workshops, in-person and virtual clinics, and generate referrals. The availability of service providers and other organizations with physical locations is critical to New York's veteran community because of the demographics of the veteran population here. According to the National Center for Veterans Analysis and Statistics, approximately 50% of New York State's veterans are over the age of 60, and when you add veterans who are aged 50 and over, that number rises to 2/3. About 43% of the veterans in the state are from the Vietnam era, Korean War era, and World War II era. And this past week, we just marked the 50th anniversary of the last U.S. troops withdrawing from Vietnam, which makes the youngest Vietnam-era veterans 68 years old. These numbers are why our Veterans Initiative focuses our work on providing legal services to New York City's older veterans. The COVID-19 pandemic revealed a stark digital divide in our city. When the pandemic forced physical locations to close and providers move services online, many of the most vulnerable New Yorkers were left behind because they lacked access to technology and comfort with that technology in order to be able to access those services. A key group that fell victim to the digital divide was the older New Yorkers. Not only were many older New York veterans unable to access services during the height of the pandemic, but they also became socially isolated. According to the National Council for Aging, COVID-19-driven social isolation has increased risks of depression, cognitive decline, and dementia. In addition, social isolation may also have an impact on physical health and the ability to complete activities of daily living. All of these factors will impact an older veteran's ability to continue to live healthy lives in the community. If we're concerned about the mental and physical health of our If we're concerned about the mental and physical health of our aging veteran population, we need to ensure that they have physical locations where they can connect with other members of their community and to access critical services. For some veterans, this means attending meals and programming at local older adult centers. For other veterans, this means connecting with fellow veterans at VFWs and American Legion Halls, and some will go to vet centers in their borough or to other VSOs with physical locations. Wherever our older veterans choose to connect with their community, it is important that New York City's older veteran population has a wide range of options, that most meet their needs and desires. We know the problems of social isolations could cause, and we should all be invested in ensuring that older veterans do not fall victim to those harms. We would like to thank the council for holding this hearing and continuing to invest in services and programs to make New York City a place where veterans feel welcome and at home. The many organizations and services that are supported by the council's Veterans Initiatives are critical to the shared goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. And again, this, the service that you provide our veterans is so, so important, and I can understand even, you know, with the pandemic, that you weren't able to get around as much and obviously didn't go into meetings, so there's catch-up that has to be done. So I hope there's like a lot more of you out there that we can really clone and get, because I, sitting through, you know, by the way, you gave a seminar in my office, which was wonderful, and if we can do one for veterans at some of the posts, and I know you've been doing it, and we can expand it in the council, we'll certainly work on that. And so if you let us know what we can do to expand the program, to do catch-up from the pandemic, we'd certainly appreciate it. So we'll talk.
Yes, absolutely. We'd love to make that connection.
And I thank you for your great, great service to not only, you know, our districts, but also particularly to the veterans. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Next witness, Deidre Rice-Rice.
Good afternoon, Council and Chair. Dear Deidre Rice-Rice, I'm the Assistant Vice President of Residential Treatment for Samaritan Teta Village. Push it a little closer. Is it, is it on? Okay. I'm also a U.S. Air Force veteran, and so I worked for Samaritan for the past 12 years. And what it takes for veterans suffering from substance use disorder and mental health issues are layers of coping skills, strategies, healing, and supports, and namely, with city council's help, we've been able to develop programs like a Veterans Pride Pilgrimage, where we travel to Washington, D.C. and do a historical and reflective cost of freedom tour, Transcendental Meditation, we work with TM, Equestrian Therapy through Serenity Stables, Art Therapy, Performance Art, Music, Voices of Valor is one of the organizations that we've worked with, Theater of War, who does acting and supports for the Veterans in Program, the Broadway, we work with TDF to get tickets to Broadway, physical therapy that's not prescribed, like sailing and rowing and rucking and running, family reconnections through family associations, doing alumni connections with our programs as well as the New York State Alumni through veterans, working with DVS, working with CARE, who just said, and Wurlitzer came in to talk about their Care Cafe, which is fantastic. All of those are, in addition to the many evidence-based practices that we use to help veterans restore their, order to their lives from addiction, from mental health issues or breaks. We have Seeking Safety, which is a coping skills group, helps with PTSD, relapse prevention, anger management, wellness self-management, and, you know, a myriad of other mindfulness exercises. We have vocational supports to help restore order and productivity. We include resume writing, interview techniques, and job search and internships. We also often have to get clothing and shoes and digital access for our veterans. Samaritan is a pioneer in veteran services for those with substance use disorders and mental health issues. We've been around for over, well, we started in '86. We've served thousands of veterans. We have the capacity to manage over 100 veterans at any given time in New York City. We have programs in Queens and Manhattan. We have three facilities dedicated to, specifically to serving veterans, one which is a premier Women's Veterans Program. We are proudly serving a network of veterans, and during the pandemic, we were able to keep our doors open and embrace those veterans who needed help with alcohol and substance use disorders despite the pandemic. We successfully isolated many of them, brought them back into treatment. We used hoteling when necessary. No veteran in our residential system passed away because of the pandemic, so we're very proud of that, none. We invested in digital access, so we had social distance. We were able to continue programming while they were inside without putting them at risk. As an Air Force veteran and a person of long-term recovery, over 30 years, I have firsthand knowledge of being able to utilize services that are specific to military culture, that helps with restoring structure and order, de-stigmatize a veteran having gone through care or need care, not being afraid to ask for care. The council has supported us over the years by offering additional support, funding support for some of the activities that we propose. We, we build a culture of recovery. We include alumni of the program so that they come back to us. We have an Alumni Elite Activity, which is five years after they were in treatment and in recovery, they come back and they embrace sort of their peers, and that we have a Legends and Legacy Group. So legends are those who are among the older group, and the legacy are those OEF, OIF, the younger folks that are coming out that have struggled with addictions or mental health issues. Less than 10% of the United States population have served in the military. Before OEF, OIF, it was 7%. To say that we need to take time to, take time and support funds to embrace those who struggled with addiction and/or mental health issues, embrace them and support them in their healing is something that isn't coming upon all of us. I am proud of my service, but it's always nice to be acknowledged for having gone through so much but persevered. So Samaritan asks for you to continue to support us, and I'm happy that I had this chance to testify.
It's amazing the amount of work you guys are doing. It's terrific. But tell me some of the programs that you feel need to be expanded in Samaritan, because there's, there's so many. With all the years that you've been, you know, associated with them, what works? What needs to be expanded in that area?
Right, so now, especially because of the pandemic and the transition to more of a digital access opportunity, making sure that veterans have access and have training for using technology to access services and care. And then our younger veterans are really more into the digital world, so like, the VSOs are wonderful, however, having a brick and mortar is less attractive than having a platform that we can interact at a distance, not by isolation, but maybe just even a game night. So while we have bingo around, that's for us older folks, they want PlayStation 5. They want, you know, other activities that are going to engage them, and, and we have to be on top of it quickly. It's just like, the only, the attention span is very, very short, so you want to engage them, connect them well, and encourage them that it's a good thing that they are a veteran, that, make them proud of it. So expanding the Pride Trip, our pilgrimage, expanding the activities like rowing, rucking, marathons, they run, they, you know, being a part of a gym, and then getting awards. They recognize and appreciate, I say "they," we, I'm going to go younger, we recognize and appreciate being acknowledged and rewarded for our competitive spirit. Winning is important to, to younger folks.
But it's so important to have a veteran head this program and be associated. How long did you, you served in the Air Force?
I was Air Force for four years active and two years reserve.
Wow, so valuable. Thanks so much for your wonderful program and for coming to testify today. Thank you so much.
And it's always a tough act to follow Commissioner Hendon, so.
He's here listening. He's amazing.
Yeah, I know, it always is. So thank you all for having me. I appreciate you.
Yeah, she has, Councilmember Paladino has a question.
Paladino, I have to say, I love your boots, too. Sorry, just had to say.
What's that?
I love your boots. They were fantastic. Sorry, I just.
I'm getting a lot of wear out of them this year. I want to say thank you. I absolutely love Samaritan, and I had no idea about you servicing the veterans.
Yes.
You see me leaning in. I'm intrigued by what you had to say. When it comes to the drug addicted and the mental health, that strikes a note personally with me. So I'd like to say thank you, and I'd like more information, because going forward, this is very worthwhile. Where are you located in Queens?
In Queens, we are in Richmond Hill.
Great.
Right, 89th Road, 130th, and in Manhattan on 43rd Street, so right down the street from Times Square, 43rd between 9th and 8th and 9th.
And this is going on for 30 years?
This is since 1986.
Fantastic.
Yes, yes, yes.
And I love the fact you said legends and legendaries.
Legend and legacy.
And legacies, yes, that is terrific.
The legacy that we hope to leave, and connecting them, you know, just having them mentored and supported, and separating them at least so that when they're acknowledged, they recognize their service and the distinctions between the two.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. I want more information.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
You're welcome.
I would now like to take a moment to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. We will now move on to remote testimony. Once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and you may begin your testimony once the sergeant-at-arms sets the clock and gives you the cue. Your testimony will be limited to three minutes. Please wait for the sergeant-at-arms to announce that you may begin before you start your testimony. First witness is Chief Master Sergeant, retired Edward Schloman, Operation Warrior Shield.
Starting time.
Thank you for the opportunity to introduce our foundation, and to those who may not know of us, I've been around doing this work for the last 13 years. Our mission is to heal the hidden wounds of our heroes, and we do this through a great partnership with the David Lynch Foundation of providing free-of-charge Transcendental Meditation, which you just heard how much we have done with other, other organizations, especially those who are addicted. And I also have a great partnership with the Darvish State Animal Foundation in providing companion animals. So I'm happy to say that these programs are a complete success, and we wish to encourage this council to support us within not only the city council, but with the opportunities that would put us more out into the veteran community. The support is by letting your base know that we are here for them and to ask your office for any financial support for this great movement that we're doing. We would like to build a list of those who may wish to have a dog or to learn TM, and my contact is my name, E. Schloman at AOL. So now I could hold the rest of my short presentation to any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ed, and, you know, I'd like to hear more about this program because we certainly, I mean, we could actually help not only the animal, but of course, the veteran. And you do, how many veterans do you serve per year in your program?
Well, I'm happy to say that we probably hit 100,000 veterans to learn TM since I first brought that in the year 2010 with the great Jerry Yellen, world, late great Jerry Yellen, a World War II veteran, and TM has been a lifestyle in all of the military services as well as the VA hospitals throughout the country. So we're proud of that. And I got involved with the animal side when I saw how important the, an animal can give emotional to support, and even though this is a veterans conversation here, I am working with NYPD Health and Wellness also in providing recovery dogs for this. Presently, we have given out 10 so far, and we take them from the Southampton Animal Society, train them for a few months, and we're definitely making a difference. And, you know, like I told you many, many years ago, what kept me going was a young Lance Corporal who served in Iraq, and he said to me, "You know, chief, before I met you, suicide was my only option." So those kind of comments I'm hearing again as I give someone a wonderful companion.
That's a great story. Thank you so much, Ed, for your service, and we'll be in touch definitely about expanding your funding. Thanks so much.
Next witness, Helen Thurston, the Evergreen Cemetery Preservation Foundation.
Time has begun.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk. Thank you, Commissioner Holden. Thank you, Commissioner Hendon, and thank you, Councilmembers Andy Nurse and the other members of this distinguished committee. The Evergreen Cemetery has an important veterans' training program to present to you that will take veterans, give them career opportunities with long-lasting benefits and career paths in the green future industries. These are jobs that are available presently and hard to fill in New York City with the city departments of parks, with not-for-profits that have landscaping around them, with commercial organizations, with entrepreneurial opportunities for veterans. These are positions in which a veteran can either excel on a team, excel as a manager, excel as a foreman, excel in entrepreneurship, and we are ready to go with this program. We are looking forward to hiring 20 veterans with paid internships. This program was brought to us by Commissioner Hendon, and it's truly a way to help veterans transition from active service to long-term employment with benefits. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about this program. It will take place on 225 acres of beautiful land in Brooklyn and Queens. It will serve veterans who live in Brooklyn and Queens. We are also open through all veterans throughout the city, and it would be our great honor to serve in this capacity. Any questions?
Yeah, it sounds like a great program. Tell me a little, why, is it, is it a funding issue that only 20 can apply? Because it seems to me that many city agencies could use personnel, and we should start with veterans, I would think.
This program provides introductory training and landscape design and outdoor green careers. So the veterans themselves, veterans of all genders, will be working outdoors, learning how to manage a landscape. So they will be under the supervision of the Davi Institute, which is a national company that does already provide training to youth, and they're going to be now transitioning to this program, providing to veterans. So you have to, we are running heavy equipment, you're running light equipment, you're learning college material about planting shrubs, trees. It's intensive, and so therefore, it's 10 veterans to each instructor. There will also be soft services like how to do a resume, how to interview, how to give an elevator speech, how to believe that you can transition from the military to a civilian career.
Great. As somebody who taught in college for 40 years, I always found my veteran students to be not only more mature, obviously, more experienced, but they worked really, really hard. So it sounds like a successful program, and we should look to expand it, but thank you so much for your testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much for this opportunity, and a special shout-out to Paul Valone for his support and assistance, and to Commissioner Hendon and Eileen. his support and assistance, and to Commissioner Hendon and Eileen Ellen Greeley. Thank you.
And he's here. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you so much to Councilmember Sandy Nurse, who's actually been to visit. We would like to invite you all to come and visit, but a really big shout-out to Councilmember Sandy Nurse.
Thank you for that. Thanks so much. Thanks for your testimony.
We have now heard from everyone who has signed up to testify. If we inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify in person, please visit the sergeant's table and complete a witness slip now. If we inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify virtually, please use the raise hand function on Zoom, and I will call on you in the order of hands raised. Next witness, Mr. Raymond Raimus.
Thank you. Committee, Chairman Holden, Commissioner Hendon, the council members, and the entire committee, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak briefly. As many of you already know, my post, I'm the commander of Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 3427 in Flushing, Queens, and I was part of the victimization of Department of Buildings. And so when you talk about a task force, I think agencies such as the DOB needs to be investigated for the practices utilized in our situation where we spent over $20,000 of money that could have gone to veteran services and servicing the community to an agency that was unwilling to help us get through the situation. I made calls, and I could get no answers. If it were not for the current situation that we have with Torres Tech coming in and spending $300,000 of their own money to rebuild our post, we would, I would not be here before you this afternoon. And even when they came on board, we had an amnesty period where the Department of Buildings, when we said we had no more money, took the last $750 we had, only to find out in 2022, they had an additional $6,000 in fines that we knew nothing about. These things need to stop. I don't know if it was part of any kind of development predatory actions utilizing a city agency to go after and target Veterans of Foreign Wars posts, but it's something that really needs to be looked into. Now, we are currently energy efficient. We no longer use gas. We are fully electric due to Torres Tech. They would like to do that with a lot of the VFW posts, as well as provide training and HVAC and getting veterans opportunities to be trained and get jobs. We currently are dealing also with Con Edison to the tune of $12,000. Having to call and navigate and get no answers and still be held with these hefty fines is unheard of. We are currently on some sort of a payment plan. Also with the IRS and Department of Finance, with all that went on from 2015, when I took over as commander and inherited a situation that I had no knowledge of, we, I had, CPA had to refile for a 501(c)(3). IRS is currently saying that we have no record of six years of tax returns, and thus now we're waiting to hear back from them because they've taken away our tax-exempt status. We need advocates. We need people that we can go to when situations like this happen and kind of help us navigate and get through these processes. I heard a lot about, you know, as I was listening, about young vets. Young vets don't want to have places where they can sit and drink. Young vets need services. I want to be able to open my post and be able to have it utilized by Veterans Administration to have veterans have a place where they can come and apply for their claims, so they don't have to go all the way to Manhattan. We can do food pantries for the communities, things of that nature. Young vets are gravitating to wounded warriors because there are a lot of programs and projects in the outreach. Wounded Warriors comes after you, they seek you, and they provide you the services that you need. In terms of the housing, we were one of the posts where, when we were going through a lot of this, I know Helen Greeley knows a lot about it, we were one of the posts that were very interested in having that. But what we wanted to know, what a lot of members wanted to know, is what would be the benefits of the post? How would they see monies from affordable housing be on their post? What would be, like I said, what would be the revenue? What would be the amount of housing going to veterans? It's one thing to have affordable housing, but how much of that housing would go to veterans? So these are the kind of questions that were asked by my membership, and I'm quite sure a lot of the other veterans' memberships. So my biggest thing is these issues in terms of city agencies not being available or helpful enough to help us navigate when things happen, when situations arise that need to be repaired. We need to get the education on it so that we can do what we need to do. I don't, I don't want any other post to ever have to go through what we had to endure from 2015 to 2022. And I thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Well, Ray, I want to thank you because it was your advocacy that helped with the draft the bill to try to not have this happen to other posts, what happened to you. And you're one of the really real people that forced this hearing, by the way, you know, because of your work. So that's why we have to talk very, more often, and I've, you know, spoken to you a few times, but this is the kind of advocacy we need. And how do we cure these problems? How do we work on this? It's not really, you were dealing with bureaucrats. You were dealing with an agency that just sees you as another location. They're not really seeing the work that you do. And that's what we need. We need more, you know, we need, we need all our agencies to be more compassionate and actually treat our veterans a little more special in their locations, so you don't go through this, and you don't have to throw money away, and that we can really cut to the chase. So, Ray, I got to thank you for all you've done so far and continue to do. So let's meet more often, but let's hear some ideas for more legislation, and that's what I'm here for. Thank you so much.
Seeing no one else, I would like to note again that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Chair Holden, we have concluded public testimony for this hearing.
And thank you all for your testimony. Excellent hearing, I think, and thanks, Commissioner Hendon, for certainly hanging in there as usual, and your staff. It was an eye-opening hearing, and we thank everyone, and this hearing is closed.